The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the common council meeting to order if we could please start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as strong.
Thank you. Now, if Clerk Newman, if you could please take the roll call.
Gladly. Alderman Isenek?
Here.
Alderman Sednik?
Here.
Alderman Lewis?
Here.
Alderman Perkins?
Here.
Alderman Marshall?
Here.
Alderman Grady?
Here.
Alderman Repela?
Here.
Alderman Nichols? All are present.
Thank you. We do not have a public hearing this evening, so we will move on to E., which is Report of Department Officers, Department Heads, Staff, and Consultants. Is there a motion to approve the minutes to receive in Communications? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like first to receive Minutes A through M and Communications N through T.
Second.
It's been a motion, the second. Is there any discussion?
I do have one.
All right. Alderman Sevanik?
Yes, in -- and I think Alderman Nichols, you might hit. Okay. There was a -- in one of the communications, I'm trying to -- oh, the planning commission, they said --
This was correct.
It's the same one? Okay, because I just, I read it, and so you got it. Well, maybe the public needs -- they don't need to know? No. Okay. There's just a spelling error.
All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Next, we'll move on to F., which is public comment on any matter of concern to the city. And there's a five-minute limit, so if anyone wishes to speak, please step forward to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor.
King.
Thank you, Chief. I think he's over there. Thank you, members of the police force. My name is Steve Atkins with Atkins Development Group. I believe most of you are somewhat familiar with me from the Woodfield Prairie development. We're also passing out bullet points of what I was going to speak on. Chief, once again, I can't see you here. I think you might be over there.
Great job on preparing. This presentation is very impressive.
A lot of time and effort went into that, and I think we all appreciate that. I don't think this is a question of whether we appreciate the work of the policemen or whether, you know, in a perfect world, that we wouldn't all like a greater degree of police protection. But it comes down to what the city can afford, what the city's residents can afford, and how this might affect developments and promises and commitments the city has already made. And that's what I'm speaking to tonight, is the interest of my company, and I would suspect the interest of other developers in the city who are taking on large projects and how this might affect it. In our particular development, we're developing 90 homes at an average price of $600,000 to $700,000, which ultimately will create $54 million to $63 million in additional tax valuation. It's a huge investment on the part of myself and my company, and taxes are, whether we agree or not agree, taxes are perceived as being high in Manassia. And in the real estate and development world, perception is reality. Also, the challenges we have today is extremely high interest rates, high building costs, and an unfavorable political climate. My question is, why do we want to make it even worse? I would suggest that the timing of this proposal is unfortunate. The total tax bill per home in my development already is $10,000 to $12,000, some more, actually. This proposal would add $600,000 to $750,000 to each tax bill in my development. It would also substantially increase my development costs on vacant land and spec homes. The city isn't responsible for this, but, you know, I'm getting crushed right now by interest rates as opposed to when I first started my development. Right now, my carrying cost on land, spec homes, and what we got going out in the development is costing me $25,000 a month. My development costs have tripled in the last two years since we first got started. To add this additional burden would be a chore. Most of my residents are retired and on fixed incomes. The residents are acutely aware and very alarmed by high taxes. The number-one reason that people choose not to build or buy in Manassia, and in particular our development right now, is high taxes. I can't tell you how many sales I've lost. When we got close to closing and the question comes up, "By the way, tell me what the tax rate is here," and then we do the math, and we don't see the people anymore. In particular, local high-producing realtors often cite high taxes in Manassia as to why clients buy elsewhere. Once again, in real estate, perception is reality. Our clients aren't comparing Manassia to the communities you might think. They're not comparing us to Appleton, Nina, Oshkosh, Green Bay, but rather to the fast-growing villages such as Harrison, Greenville, Grand Chute, Kimberly-Hobart, and Raytown, okay, where services are comparable in the user's eyes, okay, and schools generally are perceived as better. In our particular development, we have Appleton schools, so it's one tax bill, and sometimes people, you know, don't do the math to figure out how much is coming from Appleton schools and how much is coming from the city of Manassia. Our development is costing the city virtually nothing. We were not given a TIF incentive. The city has provided us with a loan, which is very helpful, okay, but we have to pay it back with interest. So, you know, the net cost ultimately to the city is zero, and the city's getting quite a windfall in additional tax increment, which I would suggest to you someday could help play for additional police protection.
Your time is up, but thank you.
What's that?
You reached your five minutes. I'd prefer we don't do the Q and A right now. We just let folks ask for some more time, because this is a horribly -- this is a huge investment that Mr. Atkins has put forth, and so I'd like to be able to finish up. Do we have -- how much more time?
Two more minutes, please.
Two more minutes, as the council?
I'll allow for two.
All right. Two more minutes.
Okay. Thank you. I understand many of you are new on the council, and I know many of you campaigned on a promise to keep a lid on taxes. I would ask that you please keep that promise. I also have an understanding that similar proposals have failed multiple times in recent history. I don't know that for a fact, but that was related to me. The most recent police chief, the retired police chief, and pardon me for not having his name here, he quoted in his retirement address that very little of the assets of the police are directed towards our area in the northeastern part of the city. He also related in his retirement address that, this is almost a quote, that he had to look three times at how low the crime rates were in Manassia. He couldn't believe how low they are. So, kudos to the police department. They're doing a great job. And I'm not an expert on police work by any means, and I will never claim to be. We weren't given a great deal of time to prepare for this, and thus the reason I don't think any other developers are here tonight, and we quite honestly didn't know about it. But just in a quick search of sworn officers per thousand population, there are many that cite that sworn officers per thousand is actually a very poor metric, but rather, you know, the more accurate development is the police department achieving the goals of the given governmental agency. And it would appear that, once again, the Manassia department is doing an excellent job. So with that, I thank you for your time. That's the extent of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the gallery that would wish to speak? Yes. Alderman Sevanik?
There was a handout, so I would ask that the clerk have this placed on the communications for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sevanik. And then if you could just please state your name and address. Thank you.
Debbie Galiazi, 1025 Melissa Street, Manassia. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. I'm here to speak on Resolution R. 1924, a resolution approving the referendum to exceed the state-imposed property tax levy limits, which the administration committee will be discussing at their meeting. The police department is asking to hire additional staffing to help with additional duties that have been added to their department over the years. Staff at the police department has only increased by one since the 1980s, where the City of Manassia population has increased by 24% in the same time span. The city's growth has been mostly on the east side. With the city's expansion to the east, the city's streets have also increased. There are more miles of streets to cover. Just last year, the county turned a portion of the Highway 441 over to the Manassia Police Department jurisdiction, another example of more duties, but not the staffing to cover it. Allowing a referendum to be put on the ballot to hire additional staff and provide necessary training, equipment, and vehicles at the police department will allow the residents of the City of Manassia the opportunity to voice their opinion on this topic. I support the approval of Resolution R. 1924 to forward a referendum to the voters for the City of Manassia. In the 39 years that I have been paying taxes in the City of Manassia, I've had to call the police department twice for additional services. It's not about the cost, it's about the services. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dancy Ball, and I live at 505 First Street, and I've been a proud resident of Manassia for 29 years. I'm active in the Jefferson Park neighborhood and have been since its conception, and I've been on the police commission since late 19 -- or 2019, excuse me. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to express my views on why I support the referendum for the police department. Our police department is highly accredited in the state and has been able to increase our office -- excuse me, our officer staffing levels with the exception of one over the last 50 years. Policing and communication needs have obviously changed over time. We now have the benefit of body and squad car cameras, but the types of calls have changed. We now have social media issues, mental health issues, drug issues, things that weren't as prevalent 50 years ago. Domestic and welfare issues take longer to investigate. We also have the added responsibility of patrolling the portion of 441. While the population continues to -- of Manassia continues to expand in numbers, our police department hasn't. Just think how much more effective we could be with the addition of more officers. As we all have noticed, there's been an increase in crime in Green Bay and Oshkosh. The inevitable conclusion is that it's bound to migrate to the Fox Valley. Several area departments have added personnel, while we haven't been afforded that opportunity. We have a highly effective and efficient department, but are stretched to the limit. We should help our department to be more proactive rather than reactive. Reach out to our community with more community involvement, such as speaking to groups, schools, senior center, neighborhood groups, and so on. Our police department participated in meetings with our Jefferson Park neighborhood. They were educating our neighbors how they can protect themselves and their homes. Educating our children on how to protect themselves is extremely important today, whether it be from physical or mental issues, social media issues, mental health and wellness issues, or drugs. Please help our police department be more progressive instead of playing catch-up by approving a referendum to add personnel. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Jakubek, and I'm a lifelong resident of Manassia and live at 624 10th Street. As a lifelong resident of Manassia, I was asked to give my views regarding Chief Thorne's citywide referendum to a council member, the mayor, all present. This referendum is to increase the number of officers, staff, and supervisors currently in our police department. During one of our last commissions that you saw tonight, I had the opportunity to hear Chief Thorne's representation of the statistics within the report. It completely amazed me. The amount of calls, the time it takes for an officer to go on one of these calls, and the follow-up work involves a very -- a lot more effort than what there used to be years ago. I have been on ride-alongs with a few Manassia officers. Because of these ride-alongs, I have developed a high amount of respect for the way they handle themselves with the public. In my view, no matter how busy or stressful the situation, these officers acted with complete professionalism. I signed up to receive a weekly crime report listing the calls all our officers go on. I have been told that not every call they go on is listed in these reports. Excuse me. After reviewing these reports, I can understand why the officers don't have time to stop all the speeders, the drivers when their rolling stops, or the rude or impatient drivers. I have been on the police commission for the last three years, and I have just been approved for another term. Being a part of the commission and hearing the details of our police department's team of employees, I am proud of the quality of our Manassia police team. Our city is somewhat small but continues to grow, and the problems our officers deal with on a daily basis become more intensified. With the firsthand knowledge, I believe we, as a city, need to increase the amount of personnel in our police department to continue to have the quality of service we have been receiving. I believe this referendum needs to be put before the residents in a way not only to support our police department and their needs, but also to the residents so they can have informed knowledge and the right to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is James Meinke. I live at 629 First Street. I also am a police commissioner. As a matter of fact, I am the president, and I've been on the commission for eight years. And like I say, reiterating what my other police commissioners have said, like I say, we know the community has needs, and I think we're very fortunate that our police officers are very trained, very competent, and very willing to do extra things. Just like I said, they've got a full work schedule, yet they're asked to do training on their days off. That takes a lot out of them. Their stress levels are high, and that really doesn't affect their ability to do things, but we are more interested in their mental health and to make sure that they do a job correctly, and I believe they do. I've written with a few police officers myself, and I plan to do it more often. And if you go on the road with them and see what they -- how they do it and how they treat people with respect, you realize that we have a great department, and they're doing a great job of keeping our crime rates down as much as they can with what they have. And I hope that the common council will approve the referendum and give them the extra officers they need and the equipment they need to do their job, and let the citizens know that our police department is on their toes, will respond when they need, and not like some areas where police officers don't respond for hours or don't respond at all. So we're very fortunate, and I hope the committee approves this referendum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Zlatowski, live at 335 Lake Road in Manassia, also a business owner here downtown Main Street. Dear council members, I will summarize my concerns that I submitted this morning after receiving a notice last Friday evening regarding a request for an outdoor food and alcohol service for 192 Main Street. If you have not had a chance to read my document or view the fire risks mentioned at 196 Main Street, I would ask that you please consider doing so prior to deciding on the rooftop alcohol request. My primary concern is the safety of 196 Main Street, its residents, and occupants. I'm asking to wait for the final state approval of occupancy and for an inspection from the Fire Department to assess the overall safety of also 196 and 192 -- excuse me, Main Street with the concerns raised today and in that email, particularly in reference to international fire codes and the risks to the neighboring 196 residents at Main Street. The rooftop and fire pits are next to highly combustible materials attached to a firewall. These materials are above my firewall in my property line. I don't believe there are any sprinklers for the outside area with open fire sources, and certainly there are none next door on the historical building of 196 Main Street. There are a lot of compounded risk factors with the potential addition of alcohol consumption and flammable spirits. Think about vaping, smoking. Recreational fires, I believe, require a minimum of 20-foot distance to a structure or combustible material. I believe this is Section 307.42. I believe the International Fire Code, Section 307.4, require open burns in an approved container to also have a minimum of 15-foot distance to a building structure. From the photos emailed, the fire pits appear to not meet these requirements. I would also like the trespasses to be removed, first and foremost, the combustible materials above my property line and above my firewall, which can fall on my roof in flames. I spoke with some of my tenants, and fortunately, with the short time constraint, received this late Friday, and they were unable to all be informed. But there were a couple of things that they asked me to share since they couldn't be here as well. So, rusted roost, from a safety standpoint, is already walled in seven windows of five apartments. Four of these apartments no longer have a window, a functioning window, or proper ventilation, the ability to use that window for fire regress, cooling, or even putting in a window AC unit. The loss of the second -- fire exit is also on the second floor, unsprinkled historical building. In addition, obviously, there would be noise nuisance, drinking, partying, music through the tenants' windows, which will be problematic for them in their apartments and also bedrooms. There are multiple risk factors that I already identified. I hope that you please consider the impact on the residents, and I just want to thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Lamke-Roshan, and I serve as the CEO for the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Fox Valley, and more specifically, of course, our club here in Manassia. I'd like to take just a few of your minutes of your time to offer a few remarks that I hope will be taken into consideration as you discuss holding a referendum that would, if approved, add personnel to the Manassia Police Department. First, I want to extend my sincere thanks to Chief Thorne and before him, Chief Steika, and all of the Manassia Police Department team members for their continued support of our work, the thousands of kids that we've served since we first opened, and their families. Since the club first opened here in Manassia in 2015, the Manassia Police Department has been a steady partner in our efforts to help kids in Manassia feel and be safe, have access to life-enhancing opportunities, build relationships with caring adults, and connect to the community at large, whether through regular environmental safety reviews, conducting Alice training, service on our corporate safety committee, or through a quick and skilled response whenever we've needed them. The Manassia Police Department has been an exemplary partner and is among the best we work with in the very many communities where we operate throughout Aldegamee, Winnebago, Calumet, and Manitowoc Counties. Secondly, I want to add some brief perspective on the needs we see every day. The young people and the families we serve navigate a far more complicated world than they used to. We have been and still are enmeshed in what experts have labeled as a youth mental health crisis. You may know this, you may not, but of note, the rate of youth suicide attempts in the Fox Cities is double the statewide rate. We have been and still are enmeshed in an opioid abuse epidemic, and we have been and still are experiencing an elevation in youth risk behaviors we haven't seen since the 1990s. For example, our home base program that provides 24-hour crisis intervention and ongoing support services for youth experiencing housing insecurities is closing in on needing to put those kids in crisis on waiting lists. The numbers in our caseload in that program alone have ballooned over the past 10 years by more than 800%. Finally, and in some measure, most importantly, we believe our law enforcement officers need to have the time to engage in community-oriented policing, and for that to happen, there needs to be enough of them. I maybe can't tell you how many, exactly how many crimes are prevented by an officer who spends just an hour every once in a while in our gym playing basketball with kids, kids that he or she may have run into into the past and far less positive experiences. But I can tell you the positive relationship that develops between those officers and those kids makes a lasting difference in how those young people feel about law enforcement, and more importantly, how they feel about their community. One of the things that we know to be true is that when kids feel safe, everything is possible. When kids do not feel safe, nearly nothing is possible. At the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Fox Valley, we're big fans of our many friends and partners at the Manassia Police Department, and I again encourage you to carefully consider the vital role that department has and needs to continue to play in helping make Manassia a great place for all young people to grow and thrive. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Sandra DeBille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I was not planning on talking about the proposed referendum, but there's not an opportunity to speak before the administration committee, so I will speak now, and I will again ask that the Chair of Administration include a section to allow a public comment. First of all, I think everyone needs to kind of just take a step back. I don't think the conversation is that, do we or don't we want to increase our police force? I think the vast majority of people, other than maybe a few criminals, would like it at a lower level. I am fully in support of our police department. I'm fully in support of increasing patrols and increasing staffing. My concern is the way it's going, being done. I don't believe going to is the way it's going, being done. I don't believe going to referendum to exceed the levy limit is a fiscally responsible way to do it. I also question, I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe the police union contract is up this year. I would strongly suggest, before we agree to an increased amount, we find out what that amount is going to be, negotiate the contract, find out what, what these staffing dollars are going to look like with the new contract, before you enter into anything further. Because it could very well be, you agree to this million dollars, and then after you negotiate, it could well exceed that amount. And then, if you exceed that levy limit through referendum, you could jeopardize your shared revenue, because that extra amount wouldn't have been approved through the referendum. So I think you need to take a step back, negotiate the contract first, find out where we're at from there, and then think of a piecemeal. We do everything in Manassia piecemeal. Do we really need seven officers right away? I don't think you physically could hire seven officers at one time, because I don't think you'd have that many applicants. Or six, it is now? Thank you, Randy. But I mean, two officers this year, two officers next year. My problem with the referendum is that it's open-ended. There's no sunset clause. It includes vehicles, squad cars, training, and equipment. This isn't just about staff and sworn officers. I also may suggest that some of the public outreach that is done could be done by the CSOs or auxiliary. I don't think it would need to be done by a sworn officer. There are things that could be worked out. And honestly, I think last council meeting, you did a reconciliation of the books, because I believe there was a million dollars that had been budgeted that I, as a taxpayer, had to pay for, but those projects weren't done. And so they were rolled over into this year's budget. So obviously, there is money and projects that aren't as critical that we can find money to hire some officers without having to go through a referendum, without exceeding the levy limit. And then finally, on this topic, I do question, the budget has already been passed. If the referendum is approved, that will change the budget. Does this vote at administration, would that require a two-thirds vote, not just a simple majority, because you're modifying the budget? And in tandem with that, later in tonight's council meeting, you have a resolution for the fire department for an employee pay adjustment after the budget has been passed. Does that also need a supermajority vote, or whatever you call it? So my, my opinion is that, yes, I'm supportive of increasing the police department. I know that they also are looking at building a new facility. I think a lot of this should have came up at budget time, and a lot of this, honestly, should have came up the last 20 years. We wouldn't be in this boat. I mean, we, this should have been addressed every year and not waited till the last minute.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chad Lewis, 1032 Grove Street. I am here, I was here a couple weeks ago talking to, well, the previous council at the signed I made some public comments about the election reporting, the April 2 election, which is over a month ago now. I did cite some examples of concerns that I had with the election reporting. I'm not going to go through those details again. They are, those are on the video, but not the minutes, which is what I'm here to talk about. I also, after those minutes, after that meeting, I learned about the issues with the Board of Canvas results and the changes required for that. So my, what I'm here to talk about is really the minutes that I saw, but the summary of my results from that last meeting. While not inaccurate, I do not believe that that summary properly reflected what I was trying to say or my call to action. So I'm here to clarify my call to action, which is, I was really asking for the mayor and the council to investigate the issues that happened at the election. Not the counting and so forth, that, like I said, that was fine, but more of the reporting. And again, the reason is because of the critical nature of the November election and the potential that any type of, any perceived problems or irregularities could cause issues on a national stage. So I want to make that very clear, and hopefully these will get in the minutes, that that is the request that I'm making, and I ask that the council and the mayor take that to heart. Thank you.
Hi, Corey Simon, 2517 Gosling Way, Manassia. Born and raised on Sixth and Milwaukee. I'm 100 percent for more police. I'm not 100 percent that the taxpayers should pay for it. We are the seventh highest taxed in Wisconsin right now, so you guys got to find it in your budget to do that. But I definitely agree that we do need more police, but it can't come out. That's about a four to 5 percent more in payment for me this year than I paid, if it goes through for next year. And that would be everybody in Manassia. Right now, we pay about 40 to 50, or about 40 percent for our police force and our fire department. Find another percent somewhere, get it done, but it doesn't have to go through a referendum. May have gotten in trouble throwing apples at cars at one time. You know, I'm sure Captain Grease back in the day pulled me over and gave me a good talk, and but we definitely deemed our police, but we, right now, are at the seventh, seventh most taxed in Wisconsin. That's very, very hard to swallow. We lost about 4 percent of our population in the last three and a half years, with the prime being where it is right now at 7.2, 7.3. Interest rates are up, building is down. He was supposed to be done in three years. It's going to take another 22 years for that $54 million to come through. So I mean, when you look at that, we're losing people right now. Just be very careful, but I think you guys can find it in the budget somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Dan Emery. I live at 736 Appleton Street. I spent 22 years in the United States Army. I spent 21 years carrying mail here in the city of Manassia. Because of that, I moved here. On a daily basis, as I carried mail, I met probably every police officer that's been here, and they all do a fantastic job. But you know what? They're overworked, they're stressed out. We need more police officers. So I'm in favor of letting the citizens of Manassia decide on the referendum as to whether or not we should have, we should pay more in taxes. That should be we, the citizens, that make that decision, and I think you should give us that right to do that. And I also want to thank the council and the, and the mayor for the proclamation for the annual letter carriers food drive that we're going to conduct this Saturday. All the food that we collect stays right here in the city of Manassia at the food pantry. So hopefully everyone will support us and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Walter Ragland. I'm the pastor of Appleton Pentecostal Assembly Church, located 1100 London Street. I'm also a member of the OFR, the Overdose Review Committee, for the Fox Valley area, for like Winnebago County, and I'm executive director of AMS Addiction Medical Solutions that's in Oshkosh. So I, I help individuals that's even in the Manassia area, as well as pastor of the church. So I am for the increasing police at this time, due to the fact that I have seen personally the increase of addiction that's in our area. I have seen the increase of mental health that's in our area. I have seen the increase of violence, even across the street from our church. I called the police department maybe, I think, two weeks ago, and because I looked up and seen four or five cars of kids fighting in the middle of the street. And when I called the police department, it took them at least 12 minutes to get there. And that was because they was tied up at the time with other things. I definitely feel that we need to increase our police department because of the number of individuals that's in our area, that's coming into our area, and we have to look at what's going to happen in our future. So when we vote, I hope that we're voting for the future, not for today, because we know that we building high rises, we building all these condos, that mean more individuals are moving in. And as we continue to grow, there's going to be a greater need. So I am hoping that means more mental health, more addiction, more everything. So I'm hoping that we all understand that we need more police, we need more policing, and the Manassia Police Department definitely need the support. They come to our church every year, multiple times a year, and we have a great relationship with them. We have, we have cookouts, we have things that we can just sit back and talk, and they get a chance to know who we are. I think, I want to believe we're the only minority church in the Manassia area. I think, if I'm not mistaken. And they went out of their way to come and learn who we are. They sit down, they, we go out to lunch, we talk. Also, I know how stressed they are as well. And I believe that they need that type of support, because when one police is out on vacation, then there's a gap. When there's a police that's stressed, going under things, like there was a shooting, once again, across the street from our church, a man got shot. That officer had to take time off. Who took his place? Because psychologically, he had to deal with that. We have to understand, we're in a different age. And from my understanding, we have not had additional police officers since the 1980s. The time is now for us to be able to increase our police force, give them the support that they need and the backing that they are looking for. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the gallery that wishes to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the first would be the minutes to approve. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive and approve the common council minutes of 41624.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Yes, thank you. On the new common council minutes from April 16th, page three, I have a correction to offer under O, appointments, 1A, after Alderman Sevanik made the nomination. Having no other nominations, it should say Mayor Hammond moved that a unanimous ballot be cast.
All right, thank you. Clerk Newman, do you have that? All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We move. Yes.
Yes, corrected.
Yes, corrected. Thank you for that. Next, we'll move on to new common council. Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive and approve the new common council minutes of 41624.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, seeing none. Next, we move to the Board of Public Works. First is to recommend an award. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the recommendation that came from the Board of Public Works for unit contract 2024 dash 25. This is new construction. MCC Incorporated, this is base bid, and we chose to use alternative A and the amount
Is there a second? All right, the motion was made by Alderman Sevanik and seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. What are we doing?
We're going to do number two. One moment.
Hang on, it's stuck. I might have to do a roll call.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call.
Alderman Eisenberg? Alderman Sevanik?
Aye.
Alderman Perkins?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Marshall?
Aye.
Alderman Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero. Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries eight zero.
All right, next, we'll move on to item three. Is there a motion? Or we can wait a second?
I can still make the motion. Anyways, the Board of Public Works at our last meeting recommended approval of the proposed encroachment agreement for 1600 Midway Road, parcel number 6 dash 01262 dash 02.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, the motion was made by Alderman Sevanik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, when you have that ready, we'll do a roll call vote. Yep.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, next, we'll move on to the NINA Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee. Recommendations for approval. First is item four. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Sevanik?
Yeah, before I make a motion, I hate to put the city attorney on the spot. Are you ready? So this item came before our committee at the NINA Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Finance, and I'm still struggling a little bit on this, because I had asked for additional information. I didn't receive that. I'm also concerned about the, when the individual left the military, was there a gap between, and the chief may want to, you know, chime in on this at some point, the fire chief, was there a gap between his military service and when he came to NINA Manassia Fire Rescue, or was that right after? So if, if the city attorney would kind of explain this a little better to us, because this is something that's in the union contract, and I find it very interesting, and I'm not really, if I'm not getting it, I'm sure not all of us are understanding this completely.
And I apologize, I was a little late to the ballgame on this as well. What's interesting is that though we have a joint fire department, the NINA Human Resources handles that staff, that body of staff. What I did find out after this meeting occurring, in terms of touching base with their human resources director and chief Tesh, is that there is a provision in the union contract that allows for crediting those with years of service, prior years of service, specifically dealing with structure, structured firefighting experience, then those years of service. around our state. Um, but in any event, um, human resources and NINA's legal department, um, in interpreting that provision, decided it is fair to consider that experience, um, full-time firefighting experience. And in that way, they then agreed it would be appropriate to back pay that employee from when he began in 2021, um, through this year, um, because he was not credited at the time he was hired.
Okay, and I'm still waiting for that provision so that I could read it for myself, because I'm supposed to make a twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollar decision here without actually seeing that provision and just taking the word for eight, from HR. Yet I've still not gotten the answer, and maybe the chief will let me know here. Was that transition, was there a five-year gap in between there, or did we hire him from the military? Because if we hired him from the military, and this is what's in the provision, then I'm okay with this.
May I, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the collective bargaining agreement, Article twenty-six, salaries, uh, section C, excuse me, section D, I have to turn the page, says that firefighters with previous experience shall advance, as noted in this article, a firefighter hired after one-one-two thousand and three shall receive for each year a full-time firefighting experience, one half a year credit, and the new firefighter pay scale. So that's what talks to it in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
This particular firefighter started with us in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, he left the military in, I believe, twenty nineteen, and from twenty nineteen until the time he was hired in two thousand and twenty-one, was going to school to earn his associate degree at Fox Valley Technical College. That is a requirement of ours. So he was a firefighter in the military. That was his MOS. Um, left the military and took advantage of a schooling opportunity, and, um, his next, I would say, I don't know if he worked part-time jobs while he was in school, but left the military, went to school, was hired by NINA-Manasha Fire Rescue. Where this came to our attention was the last, um, recruit academy we held. We had a firefighter we hired that had full-time experience on another full-time fire department, and per the contract was given the starting wage that corresponded with what it should be. Um, this gentleman that we hired in two thousand and one kind of looked at that and said, well, wouldn't I have been eligible for that? And we shared that concern with HR at the City of NINA, with the attorney for the City of NINA, and they agreed that it was an oversight and he should have been paid for, or started at that higher wage scale.
If there's no further question, go ahead.
Oh, I apologize. I, I was just going to add too. I did ask if there were any discussions at the time of hire for that twenty-twenty-one time of hire, if there were any discussions regarding the interpretation of this provision at that time. Um, from NINA HR, there appears to have been none. Um, the last thing is, that provision that was just read is in, not only in the twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-one contract, it is also in the current contract.
All right. And I appreciate it, Chief. Are you reading that to me? Can you email me a copy of that then?
Yeah, I can email it, or if you'd prefer, I, I have it right here.
Okay, sounds good. All right, with that, if I may, um, at this time, I would like to make a motion, um, that, uh, we did have a meeting. It was unanimous in our committee, uh, with, with some understandings. Uh, I just wanted to do my due diligence, and therefore, um, I, I guess, uh, the City of NINA has, has agreed their, uh, staff that this payback should be made. So at this time, I'll move that we, uh, provide the budget adjustment for the employee as outlined in the memo for the toll of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, obviously, because of our, did, finish my motion. Um, Manasha's share then would be nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Um, the amount is not in our budget, therefore it would come from our general fund.
All right, the motion was made by Alderman Severnick, seconded by Alderman Garotti. Uh, now we'll move to discussion. Alderman Repella?
Uh, thank you.
I still had my light on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Alderman Severnick.
I just wanted to make sure everybody got this memo then. Yeah, all right. Go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, I'm just kind of curious, um, how many, uh, firemen in the last five years have been give, have been hired from other districts or other communities that we have, uh, given them the salary boost?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that. I know two. There could possibly be more.
So, but this is the first time that we've ever been kind of told about getting that salary boost. We never, I never heard of it before until this came to light. So we have been doing it in the past, at least twice?
In the time I've been here, we hi, we have hired the one in this last group of five that went through the recruit academy, that had, uh, prior experience, and to my knowledge, this other one that did have the prior experience but wasn't given the proper pay scale at the time he was hired.
So we really are focusing on hiring new recruits from Fox Valley Tech so we don't have to give them this pay bump, correct?
Well, I think we try to hire the best firefighters available off our list, whether they come from another department or right out of the academy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote, and we'll need a two-thirds.
On the order?
Yes.
What's your point of order?
Oh, I was waiting for my mic.
That's what I was, it's not letting me push it. That's why I didn't say, yep.
Send that to the order.
Yeah.
Oh, they're all blinking.
One second, please. All right, there we go.
Thank you. Um, since this is, uh, simply on the consent agenda, I'm, I have a question about that two-thirds vote. It would just, I, my recollection isn't just as a simple majority on the consent agenda, and it's the resolution regarding the, uh, budget adjustment that's coming up at the end of the meeting that requires two-thirds vote.
I thought it was because it was a adjustment to the budget at large. I will kind of, attorney, would you want to speak to that?
A budget adjustment requires a, adjustment requires a two-thirds vote. Um, in a sense, this is an action item, though in addition, we need a resolution to approve. Since the basis for this action item is a budget adjustment, um, I feel comfortable having a two-thirds required vote.
Okay, could that be noted on the agenda in the future then, if a consent agenda item requires a two-thirds vote, or any other resolution, by the way?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. If we can move to a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, next, we'll move on to item five. Is there a motion? Alderman Severnick?
Uh, just for the gallery, you're probably wondering why Severnick doing all these motions. It's because I chair these committees. That's how we do the process here. You'll find out later on. Alderman Nichols will step in because she chairs administration and those things. So I just wanted to make that clarified, and then Ted will be taking park and rec up here sooner, uh, a, after this one. So, um, thank you. At this time, um, the NINA-Manasha Fire Rescue and Joint Personnel Committee is recommending that, uh, we have an agreement for an auto, automatic aid assist for structured fires in the City of Appleton, pending approval by both city attorneys.
All right, the motion was made by Alderman Severnick. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Has the agreement been approved, read and approved by the city attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other discussion, uh, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, item six, uh, which falls under Park and Recreation Board. Is there a motion? Alderman Ted Garotti?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion from the Park and Rec Board that the Jefferson Park pool rental fees and forms are recommended in, for efficiency, for, to be effective, I'm sorry, May seventh of two thousand and twenty-four?
Is there a second?
And with that, I would like a little explanation or a recap for the people to understand what was involved here. And most of this was done by the, um, Recreation Senior Service Manager, Chloe Hanson Dunn. So if Chloe could just give us a brief recap of what's in store for the, the kids and the family people for this summer?
Certainly, I'm happy to. Over the past couple of years, we've, um, had a number of pool rentals take advantage of our great facility at Jefferson Pool, and we have found that sometimes we overstaff or don't have enough information upon the initial reservation. And so this document in front of you is hoping to streamline some of those daily operations as well as provide our staff with a more clear picture of what they can anticipate going into the event. What, how that happens is offering our service of a rentable facility into package deals so that we can tailor the amount of staff to it. We are able to have, um, our full staff, um, with five guards and two front end, and that does include a manager, um, for two hundred dollars an hour. Package two is more geared towards, um, kind of younger or smaller groups, but still having the fun in the deep end use, or a slide, but swapping between the two for three guards, one front end, and then the managers. And then a party that is geared towards younger families, which would be a hundred dollars an hour for two guards plus the manager.
Thank you, Chloe. And this is just the pool, if you want to rent the pool. Thanks.
All right, and I just want to clarify that Alderman Garotti made the motion, and Alderman Marshall made, seconded it. All right, um, is there any further discussion? Alderman Severnick?
Uh, just for the clerk, that, uh, the motion is based on the memo.
All right, uh, seeing no other discussion, if we could move forward with a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, there's nothing in H, so we'll move on to I, action items. Is there a motion for one? Alderman Severnick, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four through May second, two thousand and twenty-four, in the amount of three million, seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Eisenach. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, if we could move to a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, uh, seeing no other discussion, if we could move forward with a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, there's nothing in H, so we'll move on to I, action items. Is there a motion for one? Alderman Severnick, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four through May second, two thousand and twenty-four, in the amount of three million, seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Eisenach. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, if we could move to a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, our second item under action items. Is there a motion?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, I guess after listening to Craig speak, I have some questions about this. I, unless we have the correct info from our police, our fire chief, I'd almost like to table this until he has the information and the inspections done correctly. Chief, what's up with the rusted roost?
Bear with me. This is gonna, this might be a little long.
So Craig brought up a bunch of interesting points, so I'm just trying to follow through.
Um, April twentieth of two thousand and twenty-two, the rusted roost was given a letter from the fire department. That letter was resent again in September of twenty-two. Part of that letter had sixteen bolded or, um, highlighted points of what they needed to do if they wanted to, uh, apply for, um, what they had done up their occupancy on the second level. On, April eighth of two thousand and twenty-four, we did a fire inspection there, and at that time, there was a violation, um, where we cited them, they needed to replace three painted sprinkler heads on the first floor area in the eastern part of the building, place a no-smoking sign on the patio area, place a not a exit sign out on the patio area, extend the sprinkler system, um, to a, uh, excuse me, do a hydro test on the sprinkler system, place three extinguishers on the top floor, um, at different areas, um, extend the sprinkler system into a utility room on the patio, and then, um, test their exhaust fan and their kitchen hood system. So that was on April eighth. On April nineteenth, we were back for a reinspection, and actually, the, um, compliance test of the sprinkler system, which was one of the things cited in the, in the inspection from the eighth. At that time, we also noticed that the, the three painted sprinkler heads that were cited on the eighth had been taken care of. Um, the extension of the sprinkler system into that utility room was taken care of, and they were in the process that day of, uh, working and testing on the hood system. So that left us with no smoking signs, um, the not a exit sign, and the three fire extinguishers. So from there, on April nineteenth, it looks like, and this isn't issued by our department, but it looks like somewhere along the way, the City of Manasha issued a temporary certificate of occupancy with the conditions that the signage be placed, the no-smoking and the occupancy signage, and the, uh, not an exit sign, that the fire extinguishers, which apparently were there, just not mounted on the walls, be mounted on the walls, and there's other, and that the, the, um, hood suppression system, um, for the kitchen part be tested and balanced. From a fire department standpoint, that's what we were looking for, and it looks like they're working to comply with all that. So, um, that's some background information I can give you. I don't know if you have any other questions right now?
Um, no, I don't. I just tried to recall if that covered all of Craig's, uh, concerns. Um, I understood his concerns and, uh, just want everything to be on the up and up. So, all right, thank you.
All right, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I've read through this a couple of times, and my concern is that typically, it's reported to the common council in, um, both in the memorandum and within the packet, that the establishment-
that the establishment has passed all their inspections. Um, and in recent history, we've also receive, received the documentation that all those inspections have been completed and accepted. In this case, um, none of that is presented in this packet of information. It just plainly states that staff recommends the approval of the outdoor service application. It doesn't tell me that, and that the inspections, the various inspections have been approved, and there is not any documentation stating as such. And so I move that we postpone this until May 13th so that can be completed and presented as has been past practice.
So there was a motion made. Is there a second? All right, uh, seconded by Alderman Repella, and I see Alderman Severnick slight. Uh, just as a correction, do we mean May 20th at the next meeting?
Yes, May 20th.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Severnick?
Okay, so I'm going to speak on the amendment, and I think the amendment is, um, we're jumping the gun here a little bit. We're not trying to get all our answers. Let's get our answers. I agree with what Alderman Nichols is saying. We would have that little checkbox, you know? But we have all the people here tonight, so, um, we would have, um, the, the police department. If the police department's okay, is the police department okay with this? He's shaking his head yes. Is the fire department? Are you, are all your things completed, your inspections?
The last I knew about it, they had to hang the, um, the three signs, the no smoking, the not a exit, and the occupancy limit signs, and put the fire extinguishers up. So based on that, I would be fine with a temporary occupancy.
It, it could be contingent upon the final small little things, putting up a sign, having a fire extinguisher. I don't want to jeopardize a business here because of some minor things. Now, usually, who else was on? The city attorney? The clerk, who was, who else is usually on that checklist? I don't have one in front of me, so.
Normally, it's, um, the health department, so the sanitarium.
Okay, so the health department. I just hate to shut down a business when we have all the people here, so.
I apologize. I wasn't prepared to answer questions about this tonight, so I don't have any information about this and the status. If you have a question that I can answer.
I mean, have you made your inspections? You felt that, uh, who was doing it? Todd, or?
Yes.
Okay, and had he indicated to you that there were problems with the, the restaurant?
We have not spoken about this in quite some time, so I can't accurately speak to that tonight.
I mean, I, I understand Alderman Nichols frustration. This is not normal procedure. You know? Who else is usually on that?
Building inspector?
Building inspector? So, community development? Sam?
Uh, yeah, at this time, our building inspector has issued a temporary occupancy based on a few conditions and has worked with the state building inspector, Brian Noel, in, in that regard.
Okay. I mean, I would hate to postpone this. I mean, they've had enough postponements with that business already with everything. I understand the overspray on the sprinkler systems and those kind of things and not having signs that say no smoking. I think we pretty much know that already and, um, I'm speaking on the, the amendment, so I'm going to vote no on the amendment.
All right, next is Alderman Eisnack and then Alderman Garotti.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to just ask a few more questions. So temporary occupancy is different from permanent occupancy. How? I understand temporary and permanent, but like, can you explain that a little bit further?
Uh, certainly, I will leave that, again, this is not my certificate, so I would be just kind of clarifying it based upon my understanding as well. But, uh, my understanding is when somebody issues a temporary occupancy, uh, the, the life safety aspects have been corrected. And then there's a few minor things that, that would not impede the, um, the customer or the user from occupying the space. So again, it's, it's use the space as you intended, but we do need to follow up with a few of these minor items. So again, that is the last I have heard on this of, again, this checklist items. But again, it's, it's not regarding the space as not being functional.
Okay. My next question is, there's going to be fire pits on the rooftop, and we had a concern from the audience about it not having enough space up there. Do we know if there is enough space in the plans? I tried looking at the plans myself and couldn't quite figure it out.
I, I would just say that it has gone and received state approval.
So it has gotten state approval for the place?
Correct, before the construction had started. And I believe they did have lots of conversations with Nina Manash Fire Rescue, and I'm getting a head nod. Or do you want the mic?
Because I know that, that this gentleman in the audience has sent in other photos and concerns. I don't know if you received that email as well, about other ongoing things that wouldn't pertain specifically to this issue tonight, but.
Correct, and there are some, some issues between, um, the two property owners. I would likely pass those on to city attorney as I believe that's an ongoing litigation and civil lawsuit. So we probably would not get into those discussions.
And that's why I didn't, but I just wanted to make sure about the fire pits, the spacing, because that would be a code here that we would approve of, correct? Or is that a building thing as well? Sorry.
I can answer that for you. So a lot of the 16 bulleted points that we sent out had to deal with the fire pit. And, um, to my knowledge, our fire marshal and the state building inspector has been up there, and they've complied with the, the requirements we set forward, including spacing and making sure the fire pit is completely enclosed, making sure that nothing flammable can get in that glass enclosure that's going over it. So to answer your question, yes, they've been, uh, we've been up there, inspected it, and it's passed what we have set forth by code.
Okay, thank you. And then my last thing, just so everybody knows, I will not be voting on this just because I currently hold a liquor license, so I'll be abstaining from voting. Thank you.
Alderman Garotti?
I thought if you abstain from something, you shouldn't make any opinions either, or points. That's, that's part of the, okay. Just by the confusion here and the misunderstanding that's going on, Alderman Nichols makes good points. I'm going to look out for the city of Manasha, and I sure hope there's not any liability here if something goes on. So attorney, can you answer that? Are, are we safe with the temporary thing? Or if you say no, it's, two weeks is only two weeks, but I'd just like to hear your points.
Thank you. Yes, what's been discussed thus far as the state building code, the state building inspector has issued a temporary occupancy, um, certificate, excuse me. With that understanding, um, this approval would be through, uh, the end of June, where in July, um, again, it would be coming up again before you for the load of, um, liquor licenses that would come before you. So this would be.
Because we renew every July.
Right, the licenses.
With the understanding from the fire department, from the state building inspector, um, I don't have any concerns. Yes, there is a pending civil suit between the two owners. That's neither here nor there, but for this specific issue, um, I'm comfortable with proceeding given that the state building inspector, as well as, uh, the Nina Manash Fire, um, have given their blessing.
Okay, then I agree with Alderman Severnick on this and I'll vote no to the revised change. Let's just get it passed to everybody here.
All right, Alderman Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. I had one question about, um, well, mostly because I'm not an expert on, um, fire code and, um, what goes into a fire investigation, uh, in terms of safety. Just to clarify, the fire inspectors have determined that having these facilities at this address would also protect the neighboring buildings, especially the historic building right next door. Just purely out of the safety of the residents there, as well as the, um, we saw a few years ago with the brand burning down, that these historic buildings can go up in flames pretty quickly. So I'm curious to just double check and make sure that I am understanding correctly that the state has, has approved these facilities as safe, both for the building they're housed in and the, uh, the neighboring buildings as well.
Yes, and all those buildings are historic.
Chief, did you want to speak to that?
I certainly can. This building is definitely safer than it's ever been in terms of fire protection. One of the, um, the 16 points that was, uh, put forward is we wanted a sprinkler system in the entire building, and they sprinkled this building, which before April of 2022, it was not a sprinkled building. Now it has that fire suppression system throughout the entire building.
All right, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I will just restate that my concern is that we, as a common council, treat people and business, hold people and businesses to the same standard and treat them equally. So, um, although I understand this is a new common council, this is also, um, this process that we've just gone through is new and not, um, the way we've conducted business over the years. So if there's a change in that, I think there needs to be, um, a conversation about that or a discussion about that in the future. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights on, I think we need to vote on what was put forward to the Florida postpone this until the 20th. So if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries four, three, one, abstention.
I just clarified, we're going back to vote on it. Okay, all right, just wanted to clarify something. So it did not pass. Um, so is there any other further discussion regarding this? It passed, my apologies. All right, I apologize. So if it postponed, then can we move to ordinances? All right, just, I was looking at that, sorry, folks. All right, so we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. Is there a motion for R-15-24? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move to approve Resolution 15-24, a resolution approving a 2024 general fund budget adjustment for the purpose of funding a Nina Manash Fire Rescue employee pay adjustment as introduced by Mayor Hammond.
Is there a second? All right, motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Severnick. Director Sazman, do you want to speak to this at all, or chief?
Yeah, so this, um, resolution is just a direct result of the consent agenda item number four. That was recommended by the Nina Manash Fire Joint Finance and Personnel. So this is the specific, um, budget adjustment resolution, um, stating, um, the city of Manasha's portion of that total, um, for the $9,362.68.
All right, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. A question for the city attorney. This resolution does require a two-thirds vote. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Next, we have Resolution 18-24. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move to approve Resolution 1824, a resolution rescinding Resolution 924 for the termination of Tax Increment District Number Four as introduced by Mayor Hammond.
Is there a second? All right, motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Ted Garotti. Director Sazman, if you could speak to this a little bit?
Certainly. Um, I'll just address both of these resolutions together. On April 16th, we passed two resolutions to both terminate TIF number four and to approve the, um, housing extension. Just upon conversation with the Department of Revenue, um, they notified me that what we were looking to accomplish didn't quite accomplish that. If we would have left things as was, we wouldn't have that increment available for 2026. So what we're doing tonight is rescinding the closure resolution. We'll bring that back next year. And then we're readopting the affordable housing, um, resolution, just changing that date to this evening. And then I'll forward those onto the Department of Revenue, and it will accomplish what we intended to do on April 16th.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, further discussion? Um, seeing none, we'll move on to a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, next is Resolution 20-24. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move to approve Resolution 2024, a resolution re adopting Resolution 824, approving an affordable housing extension through Tax Increment District Number Four to benefit affordable housing and improving housing stock within the city of Manasha as introduced by Mayor Hammond.
Is there a second? All right, motion was made by Alderman Nichols and seconded by Alderman Ted Garotti. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Um, next is L, which is appointments. Um, is there a motion to either do these as a group or individually? And I'm happy to read them off if needed or wanted. Alderman Severnick?
Let's do them as a group and then you can read them off. So thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the appointments of, um, one, two, three, and four, and you could read them.
All right, uh, so we are, have the, is there a second? Thank you. All right, motion was made by Alderman Severnick and seconded by Alderman Repella. And the appointments are the reappointment of Director Jennifer Sazman to the Fox Cities Area Room Tax Commission for a term of June 1st, 2024 to May 31st, 2025. An appointment of Rachel Roth to the Plan Commission for the term of May 1st of 2024 to April 30th. Roth to the Plan Commission for the term of May 1st of 2024 to April 30th, 2027, the appointment of Frank Hafner to the Housing Authority for the term of May 6, 2024, to June 1st, 2025, and an appointment of Jason Lipsky for the Ad hoc Siscus Quintennial, I can't ever say it, Committee, or 150th. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And next, is there a motion to accept five and six? Alderman Sevenek?
Well, I'll take five first, we'll accept your resignation from the Housing Authority.
Okay, is there a second? All right, motion made by Alderman Sevenek, seconded by Alderman Repella, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, all right. Is there a motion for number six? Alderman Sevenek?
At this time, I'd like for us to agree to the resignation of Tom Marshall, who's been promoted, or maybe demoted.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Sevenek, seconded by Alderman Ted Grati. Not seeing any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. None opposed? There are no claims against the city, we'll move on to N, public comment on any matter listed on the agenda, and it's for a frame of time, five minutes, just please state your name and your address.
Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I just want to make a quick comment regarding the consent agenda. You had an item that required a two-thirds vote. I had attended the protocol committee meeting and asked that the consent agenda either be eliminated or limited to, because it's to be limited to routine and non-controversial items. Something that requires a two-thirds vote is not routine, nor is it non-controversial. It shouldn't have even been in there. And speaking of protocol committee meeting, this agenda does not match what was approved at protocol meeting. There's actually, should be an item O, should actually be items for next meeting, that's not included in here. Do your homework, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the gallery that wishes to speak this evening? Alderman Sevenek?
Was there anyone from the gallery that wanted to speak?
Thank you. I just want to address that, I think part of the reason our past city attorney didn't want that placed on the agenda because, and it could potentially be a violation of the open meetings law, because what would happen is an alderman would talk about that issue, and then it became topic where the public didn't have input on it, so. I'm just stating why that, why that reason was. I don't have an opinion one way or another, so.
Seeing that it doesn't appear that anybody else from the gallery wishes to speak this evening, we'll move on to an adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, second, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, we're adjourned.
The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manassiawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman, contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.